Well, I'm excited that we have some options for the board to think about as we move forward with budget planning for FY24. Because I think it aligns with our vision and our goal for the school system. And will provide some opportunities for affordable housing.
So thank you all for having me. Kristen Allen, I have a new position at the city focusing on affordable housing. We've been assessing affordable housing in Decatur for a really long time. And it's been incrementally moving along, but I'm here to try to put some teeth into some of the programs. The passports, the affordable passports came up with in their report for 2020. And they're now in the city's strategic plan. Affordable housing is now one of the big bucket items for the city of Decatur. Right here. And so the affordable housing passports have 23 recommendations. So that's what I'm working on. All of them are basically around preserving existing affordable housing and increasing the supply of new affordable or attainable housing. And attainable sometimes is where people like to use. New housing. So I guess my first thing just to tell you is that there are a lot of different things working together for affordable housing right now. So a lot of pieces trying to come together to make it happen because it's not easy. The Decatur Land Trust is one new entity. It's a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. And the Decatur Land Trust, the city is involved with the Decatur Land Trust. But it actually is an independent organization from the city. And it is able to hold properties in permanent affordability. So if the land trust buys a home, it keeps the land and sells the home that's on top of the land at an affordable level. And keeps it affordable for 99 years. So if you follow affordable housing, you know that a lot of affordable housing eventually rolls off to market rate and we lose it. So this is, I think, the best structure for keeping properties affordable permanently. And the land trust can also own commercial and rental properties, apartment properties too. So that's really one big strategy of getting the land trust up and running. Is to get properties and keep them affordable. And there are other tools that I'll be looking at such as tax allocation districts. I'll talk a little bit about that for the presentation. And the Decatur Housing Trust Fund that was created about seven or eight years ago through the artisans. So people that moved into their artisans started putting money when they purchased their homes, they put money in the housing trust fund. And then the general funds have been dedicating money to it each year as well, $100,000. So it's up to almost 500,000, just over 500,000 right now to give us a pool to work with for financing of affordable housing. That's really exciting as well. And policy missing middle. I don't know if anyone's seen the signs around town, the blue public hearing signs. There are 547 of them, I believe. We could all over the weekend. So that is zoning that is coming to this planning commission and city commission. And that is really a lot of what I'll talk about tonight. Because that zoning is pretty vital to what we're working on with affordable housing and trying to have a more diversity of housing types that we can work with. And we're also looking at homes with exemptions, making sure that people that own land trust homes have homes with exemptions. And partnerships are so crucial to what we're trying to do with affordable housing. So the Housing Authority is one of the best housing authorities in the southeast, if not the country. They use low income house, low income housing tax credits along something other nonprofit developers use as well. And we're also partnering, for example, with A and D P, who's a nonprofit developer on the Cottage Court project. So we're getting our feet wet with some of these really great partnerships for affordable housing. And it's giving me a lot of hope that we can, you know, move the needle along this Decatur. And so we'll be talking specifically about communities, educators, and housing tonight. So a lot of what we've talked about with affordable housing is what we call workforce housing. And really trying to move people who work in the city close to where they work. And this has so many implications for mental health, physical health. Their environmental benefits, obviously, of not having cars on the road to use. So many cities are looking at this kind of permanent fill. And moving people closer to where they work as not only a climate solution, but a health and mental health solution as well. And it also costs because owning a car and commuting is very expensive. And we have rising rents pretty much, you know, throughout the city. So as you all know, a lot of our teachers and staff have been pushed further out. And we also have a national support personnel shortage throughout the whole country. So I think a lot of districts are looking at housing as part of the whole package that they want to be able to make sure that their people have access to it. I pulled up the survey from 2018 just because sometimes people say, why would anyone who who works here really want to live around their students or their, if their police officer? Not everyone does, but we know when we did this survey, we did see that 89% of the city of Decatur, city schools of Decatur and Decatur Housing Authority employees, 133 respondents, 89% would like to live in Decatur. 59% live over six miles from Decatur. And the Atlanta Regional Commission says the average commute time to Decatur right now is about 25 or 30 minutes for people that work here. 54% of the respondents currently rent. 46% prefer a two-bedroom, which I think is important because some of the homes we're going to talk about are four-bedroom. So 46% would prefer a two-bedroom. And 45% did not have a family member over age 18 at their household. Now, I'm not sure how many of you are familiar with area median incomes, kind of the way we gauge affordability throughout the whole country. There are numbers that HUD puts out every year. I went back and looked at the CSD salary ranges and kind of how you would plug that into area median income to formulate what a a rent might be for a house or homeownership for CSD employees. So down at the bottom, I have a chart that kind of compares different salary ranges and how they fall into AMI. So early childhood and support staff, their pay range is started at about $20,000 a year. And so the bulk of those are in the range of about 30 to 60% AMI, just depending on how long they've worked at city schools. And then teachers in some of the higher salaries are 60 to 80, 60 to 100% of AMI. And so if you look at, you know, the different salary ranges, you can see that we're basically looking at people that work for CSD needing rents between 30 and 100% of AMI. Now, when you're talking 30 to 50% of AMI, those rents typically are in properties that are run by the housing authority. Because they are, it is very difficult to build a home or build an apartment unit and rent at rents that are that level. So we kind of, when I'm doing my work, I'm talking about a lot about what is something that might be more likely to be run by the housing authority because they have access to funds, you know, federal funds that we may not have with the city. And what may be more likely for a land trust or something like that. So although I would hope the land trust could go down sometimes to 50 or 60% AMI, most of the land trust properties will probably be 60 to 100% of AMI. And then the housing authority is where we're kind of looking at the 30 to 50% of AMI. So now to compare rent levels to the AMIs. So if we're looking at 30, 50, or 60% AMI based on the number of bedrooms, just kind of looking at the lower ends. You would have, you know, 30% AMI for say a two-bedroom would start at, or would be $651 max per month. And 60% AMI for a two-bedroom would be 1,300 a month. And those rents are really hard to find in Decatur. I mean, I've been out to tour some of the older apartments around town. And I haven't seen anything yet that's below about 1,650. And that's, you know, for something that's, that is a nice, nice apartment, but older and I think sometimes pretty hard to get. And a lot of the new apartment units downtown are upwards of 2,500 to 3,200 a month. So. And so I'm talking specifically tonight about four board of education owned homes around Decatur and what some possibilities might be. So these are photos of the homes. There are three over on Westchester Drive. And then one on South McDonough right over by the Early Childhood Learning Center.
And I'll just jump in here. I mentioned this at the beginning, Kristen and I met over the summer. As we were talking, she was kind of sharing with me what her role is as a new member of the city. Working with the city on this new initiative with the city for real housing. I immediately looked like, well, we have four houses. You know, how could we be part of this solution of the school system? And then we were digging through all the data from the Strategic Planning Community Inauguration Session, Affordable Housing for Teachers and Staff came up over and over and over. So as she was, you know, kind of sharing with us the presentation, it'd be perfect then for us to have this now as we're embarking on strategic planning. And how could we leverage this opportunity, not just to support teachers and staff, but then to also, we could benefit out of property that's just sitting there costing us money instead of a way to potentially earn some funds for the district. But these are properties that are owned by or how old? 2017? And they're in right now? Two of them we are using for like asset life office. And what if I call the type of potential when you were looking at going to plan that particular property right? And so when they came up on the market and purchased it, if we were to knock that down, we should have more. And the Westchester housing, touch the property lines for Westchester. So where they need to expand.
Yeah. So this is just kind of a brainstorming session of what potential these houses could have for teacher housing in different ways that they might be able to be utilized for that. So, so the homes, the first one is 2,700 square feet, the largest. And then down to 1,900. So they're all ample size. All of them have four bedrooms. And then you have some with three baths and some with two baths. So they're really great houses.
They are really, yeah.
And certainly.
They're very pretty. Updated them and all of the reboots, repaint. Refreshing. Yeah, they're very healthy.
And so how do you best utilize these vital resources? So just looking at the 30, 50, to 60%, which is kind of your, your entry. These rooms are kind of more for your support staff up to your maybe entry level teachers. That's kind of what I looked at tonight. I can run other numbers, but that's where I was thinking. These are probably people that would be struggling more so than a lot to have to find housing. So I went ahead and kept it in these ranges to look at some examples for you. And so option one would be to go ahead and rent each of them out, just sort of a whole home. So when you look at the AMI chart, it's by the number of bedrooms. So this is how the rents would correspond. At 30% AMI, you'd be looking at $839 a month. 50% would be $1,588. And 60% of AMI would be $1,678 per month. So that would bring a total on the right side of between 3,300 and 6,700 a month. So that's if you just wanted to rent it out, all four houses. Now accessory dwelling units was, that was a policy put in place back in, when was this, 2014? 2014, when this was to be allowed accessory dwelling units. So these are grainy flats, basically, that you can put behind a house. And they have to meet certain requirements, certain setbacks and things like that. So not every house, and if there are a lot of trees, like I noticed the house by the Early Learning Center is a really heavily tree plot. So it may not be the best option for an accessory dwelling unit. But this is a neat option to have because you can have a house that's rented out and then you could have an accessory dwelling unit behind the house. It's also rented out. Typically, those are one-bedroom or even studios. But for the example here, I put in one-bedroom ADU and then renting the four-bedroom now. So that you can see that if you were able to put a one-bedroom ADU on each of the homes and then also rent it out. You can see the totals of what the rent would be for those homes every month. And so you're going from four homes to eight homes, which I think is great.
Still the same 5,000? 5,000 plus 10,000?
I believe. I don't know all the details of the exact tree organist, but I believe, yeah. There's some rules around removing trees and things like that in your canopy. We're having to remove trees on the cottage court and then we have to do, you know, the replanting of, yeah, above, which is fine. But yeah, there are definitely some different restrictions and I think it does make it difficult sometimes to do it. So that's something I might be looking at in the future is can we work, work that in, work some of those policies and better for affordable housing. But I need some pilots to test this on so I know what to do. Okay. So here's another option. So this is, it's within the missing middle policy that I've been talking about. So these could be great houses to subdivide. And the survey said that people in the survey liked two bedrooms. So you could potentially divide each house into a duplex or a triplex. And then of course, that depends on what the house, how the house lends itself. I mean, it might be easier to just divide them into two. Maybe one of them is the, whatever, but that Early Learning Center, I had to see that they have a basement. So, you know, there could be an option to do a triplex and something like that. But this to me is what's really exciting about the missing middle is it just gives you opportunities. You're able to create the housing that you may need. So when you look at doing the different AMI levels, duplex, you have two, two bedroom units you're renting out. So the total per house would be 1,300. And then for the 30% AMI. And then the total for all of the four houses would be 5,000 a month or 10,000. Up to 60% AMI. And then same with the triplex. So say if you end up with three one-bedrooms. One of them obviously would be a two-bedroom, for example, I just used this to kind of give us an idea of, like, say you have to take away some space to make an extra kitchen or something like that. So you end up with three one-bedrooms and then, you know, your extra kitchen space in that fourth, where that fourth bedroom was. Kind of give an idea of what that would look like. So you're renting between 6,000 and 13,000 per month depending on the AMI. And then my last option, option four would be a subdivide and an ADU. Because the policy I'm recommending would be to subdivide and be able to also still put an ADU behind the house. So you have just an idea of doing it. Each house is a duplex and they're putting an ADU behind it. And you can see that then, you know, you're keeping your rents at a really nice level, I think, for people that work in Decatur. Even if you go to 60% AMI, your ADU would rent for a thousand, you know, just over a thousand a month. Which is this really good indicator. And then your two veterans, if you're at 60% AMI, it would be 1,300 a month. And then the total for all the homes would be, if you did 60% AMI per cent, it would be $14,000 a year. And the most exciting thing then too is you're getting two, four, six, eight, 10, 12 houses. So you're getting 12 rentals instead of the initial four. So. And so, yeah, so basically, these are just kind of a recap of how the housing policies, the ADUs that was put in place in 2014. And then the missing middle, when we couple these with affordable housing programs, because ADUs are not easy to finance. So that's what I'm looking at now is how do we have programs in place to not only allow these, but help finance them. So the policy has to go in place. So the ADU is already in place, the missing middle I'm trying to get put in place. And then we work on financing the incentives for those. But this one just compares all the different options. So you can see, you just wanted to rent the houses out. That's the first column. And then each column kind of says what your rent would be each month. And so what I think can be is exciting too is that possibly if there was a no interest loan or something like that, or a low interest loan that we could figure out for some of the construction costs that could be built into some of the rental until that's paid off. And then the school board would recoup the rest of the rental. So I think there are different ways to look at how that would be planned out. And as I said, partnerships are so important. And I'm going to assume, although I don't really know what the school board would want to do with this, but I'm going to assume you probably wouldn't want to manage our rental rentals. You probably want partners to help you with that. What was I? But, you know, the Decatur Land Trust has in its charter that it will manage rentals as part of, you know, the charter for the land trust. It's a very new entity. If it has a larger unit, I think the land trust would probably partner with the housing authority because they're experts. They've been doing this, you know, forever. So they, so what could happen is just thinking out loud. What could happen would be that the land trust helps gather a pool of applicants. And then the housing, the housing authority could, you know, manage, that it would manage the rentals for those. And the Housing Trust Fund also can potentially, if it's a land trust property, help with things like down, like first. You may not do first and last month's rent, but just kind of as an overall scheme, what we're looking at is how does the Housing Trust Fund help with things like first and last month's rent or down payment assistance? To try to help people get into rentals. We also have a Decatur Home Rehab Program. So you mentioned that the houses have already had new rooms, which is great. But I was thinking that a rehab program is an option potentially if there's some rehabilitation that needs to be done. The re, the primary purpose of the rehab program is going to be an extension of the Mark Luther King Weekend of Service. So that'll be mostly senior, different maintenance on senior low-income homes. But I'd like to extend the rehab program also into homes that the land trust might manage. And the ADU pilot program I'm working on, I'm trying to find someone to help fund ADUs. So I'll be looking for maybe three to five homes throughout Decatur that might welcome an ADU on their property. Yes. There are programs that I found that are really there are programs I found that are really successful with this. And what they do, not to get too in the weeds, but what they do is so that like, for example, the Decatur Land Trust might own the ADU. And then they pay a lease payment to that homeowner for the use of their land. But the homeowner could buy that at any time. So if they wanted to come, so the land trust would manage the rent. It would rent at an affordable level. They would pay the homeowner a ground lease payment. And then if the homeowner ever decided to buy, they'd be able to buy it. So that's kind of how I would like to structure the program. And I already have a potentially an investment fund that might be willing to help with the finances for that. But anyway, if there were houses that you owned that could have an ADU, this could be a good chance for me to try to get this program off the ground, which I would love. And then just forward thinking on teacher housing in general. So we just talked about the four houses today. And I've been a really big proponent of doing a tax allocation district downtown. This is a whole other conversation. It's so complicated. But there is one in, TADS are allowed in Decatur. There is one in East Decatur. And we have used that successfully for some inclusionary, for a project that has inclusionary zoning units to add extra ones to it. TADS, we're, we are talking about potential of the TADS downtown that would have to be, you know, okay by the community during the downtown master planning process. So I think it's something we'll be discussing then. So I'm not sure if that will happen or not. But I look at that downtown and I look at all the surface parking lots. And, you know, even like the Decatur High School parking lot or something like that, like there are opportunities down there for in downtown to put housing. And if you were to use, like, I would love to do affordable housing on church properties. Any property we could potentially get downtown, school properties, if that were to be feasible in the future. But a tax allocation district could help with, with things like that and help with the funding for them. And the school system can elect to participate in the tax allocation district. It doesn't have to participate 100%. It can be a percentage. And so that is one thing I think to just kind of keep your ears out for, because I think that could be a really great way to actually put some teacher housing on school property. And again, maybe it's leased and run by the housing authority or something like that. There would be partnership there. But the example I put down here was Jefferson Union High School, which is in California. A lot, a lot of them are doing teacher housing, I mean, California because of the price. And Decatur honestly is up too far behind. So I think that's it. So you have any questions?
I was just saying a few stories about a school in California. I was trying to remember if it was in San Francisco, San Diego. But I don't think, because that's one of the teachers that I think was probably where the school had been closed.
Yes.
The school was open.
Yeah.
And they built housing right on the campus of the school. Wow. And the teachers were, you know, that they interviewed, of course, loved it. And I was wondering, you know.
It seems like a big challenge, but this is realistic and it could happen. We just have to be very inventive and we have to get our partnerships in line, but it's possible.
Is there a way to, it's so clear that employees and teachers are paying 60% of the local market rates. Is there a way to crack that idea to already existing housing? I mean, you have apartments that are two-bedroom, one-bedroom that are already adjacent to existing schools. Like it's an apartment, it's a huge apartment in right, one of the year high school property. Down the street. And I know that those are commercially owned, but is there a way to sort of use some of those partnerships that the city already has to buy some of that housing and just kind of raise? I mean, that way you're not talking about rebuilding something and you have some of those.
You're talking about these are privately owned?
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, so.
Because some of them are just not equal, you know?
For new, well, for new apartments, I mean, there are three different ways I kind of look at it. For new ones that are going up, the inclusionary zoning mandates, 10% have to be affordable at 80% or 95%. So that's with new ones. There, the strategy around older units, a lot of the people that own them, they potentially could do some repairs on them. So we could enter into a repair program with them in exchange for keeping the rents affordable. That's a, it's a really complex problem to solve. But ultimately, I would love if the land trust could buy some of those older buildings at some point and rent them. The only other option that I know of kind of around what you're saying is when the, you know, if they're rented out and if the rent's higher than what teachers can afford, you can do employer assisted housing. That's a really tough program, I think, to run long-term because when you really look at a budget and how much an entity has to put in over the long-term every month for people, it's, I'm not saying it couldn't work, but I'm just saying it's something that I've looked at trying to structure. And it's not as easy as I think some people. I don't know if that answers your question, but I really know easy answers around, especially if something is run at the market, there's not a really easy answer on.
Who makes decisions for the land trust?
There's a board. So we have seven members on the board. Like Lynn Curry is the chair. Bill Adams, who's a realtor. Alan McNabb, who's a lawyer. Valerie Wilson's on the board. And Lisa Meyer is on the board as well, and Angela Luthrakeville for the city. So we have a commissioner and a city person on the board and on the staff liaison. So the board pretty much, you know, makes decisions as the group.
Would be nice if school
Yeah. Definitely. And I think that's a great idea because the board, the whole intention of the board is to expand it. It's just, this is kind of our founding board right now and it's a very new entity. But it would be great to have the schools having a seat at the table, especially because the bucket of people who are trying to get into these properties are city schools of Decatur, city of Decatur, Decatur Housing Authority employees. So. The land trust, eventually the people who are in the properties are also members of the land trust. So it's a very, it becomes instead of such a top-down, it becomes more of a community-led effort.
What are the you know, properties that are just sitting there? What are the next steps?
Yeah. Well, I think that in my job, what I really think I'm going to be important doing is helping drive a lot of these. So I think if the school's interested in doing something, I can, you know, they get a little more firm about what that might look like. Like, could we go ahead and go in there with someone to look at the possibility of turning them into a duplex? Could we get someone to look at if an ADU could be put on each property? Then I could help facilitate those conversations and kind of get an idea about what's really feasible on each home. And then give the board something to make a decision on. And then I think the board would just make decisions on, you know, what they will put the land trust on. You know, finding the people to rent and then the housing authority on actually managing the rental or how that, kind of those relationships might work. So there's a lot of moving parts that would have to come together, but I'm definitely invested in helping move the processes forward if that's something that the board's interested in.
Not right now, but if it is something that you express interest in, I think that I would start working towards strategic planning. Write a plan and. I would bet in fact, so how you use it. So the one house has, has been housing our school that owns this. The house is called Social Workers. And the other one has a gay kind of home baby. But we can't have any students at the house. But I think we can, if this is something the board wants to do, I think as we go through strategic planning, it's find how we're going to be housing.
And it could even be phased in where maybe initially there's two houses and then three or four years later, two more or something like that. So it's, I'm very flexible. I just wanted to make. Well, if there aren't any other questions, I really appreciate your time tonight and just letting me talk. And if you have any further questions, you have my card and QR code for an iPhone for the website webpage if you want.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm really excited. She and I met this summer and started sparking all my interest in the decision. Something the school board had talked about for a long time. And the opportunities to not have, you know, we can actually.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
Thank you. I guess when you have the wrong strategic all. Correct. Word. Yeah. Correct. We don't have to build a whole new learning center. The other thing that we'll talk about. The other thing that we'll talk about is strategic planning of the building. Instead of developing a whole new building, can we add on an expand freezer center? As another option for early learning that's in the downtown area, so the building is totally different. The reason that's interesting for me, as I think about long-term, is we don't get any reapars from the state for building an early learning center, we have to fund it 100% on our own. Yeah. We're here, we're a representative of the state, so how do we do it as supportive as possible and using?
I know, I know, I know.
They already use it as pre-K.
Everyone do their homework?
Would you mind sharing that with me?
I'm serious. I'm not lying.
I was reading it in preparation for the other P W S. I ended up not even attending, but I had to pull up a plane to catch up on heads.
Thank you.
Well, if you didn't do laundry, you actually forget, you're going to be off today, I have to ask, I'm going to dig into it too. Um, but I wanted to kind of bring together what we've been talking about in the book, the theory of action that we drafted, well, I drafted and that we'll review a little bit later. And then talk about how that's going to lead us to really important work with the board, which is reform policies, which I'm like itching to get going on. So, just to refresh your memories, uh, we talked about why, what is the theory of action? Why we use a theory of action and we talked about some examples, um, and I've been doing more research to try to make sure that we have a really solid one just to start from and then try to find two that really matches what the board wants to see. Um, and an article I read by Richard Elmore, he defines the theory of action as, "Instead of interrelated casual statements that describe actions or strategies that improve instructional practice and student performance over time at scale." And when it's talking about that scale, it's referring to the fact that it's not, that the theory has to work not just for one classroom, but across the district, across the school. Uh, so it's got to be general, but enough, um, enough direction, so everyone can apply it in their classroom. And then just to review kind of why a theory of action is important, um, because it really clearly, because it clearly articulated the theory of action in the school system, the district is really the proactive effort to guide and align our policies, our priorities and our budget. And once this theory of action is in place and created, it can be used as a driving force for all the work that we have to work. Uh, theories of actions also create a clear pathway from our vision and mission to the instructional activities in the classroom. Which is taking the vision and mission of the board and creating that through line, so everyone sees the whole connection and how the work of the board connects directly to what is. But before we want to get in and draft, um, a theory of action and kind of work on the proposal that I shared with board, we have to talk about a little, a little more deeply about how do we measure success in our system? And what will we do if anyone in the school system isn't meeting that expectation, is it remarkable? A quote from the Adams, but that I put off the top here helps define that, so that we can make it some manageable pieces for us to talk about and come up with some ideas with the board. Um, so student achievement at high level is impossible without an instructional management system as well as district standards, accountability and empowerment. And in your folder, you've got a handout that looks like this. And you've also got another handout that looks like this. So what I think would be helpful, um, before we look and kind of edit that theory of action that I shared, is to talk about standards, accountability and empowerment. We know that the board ultimately holds the superintendent accountable for the success of the district as they should. And then I hold those that report to me accountable as I should. And then they hold others accountable and so on and so on, all the way down to our classroom teachers. Um, so there has to be some type of accountability at every single level of the organization, so that people are getting the job done and meeting the roles that the board does. Um, and so what I think is helpful here is he really dives into that, we have to think of the district, what are our standards? Um, whether those be the academic standards that we teach, whether it be key performance indicators in our operation, whether it be how we operate our budget, we've got to create and make sure that there are standards for what we do, because those are the expectations that we will not hold everyone accountable to. Um, and with accountability, how, what do we do or how do we respond if people aren't meeting an expectation that we set? They haven't reached that standard, what do we do in response? Whether it's something positive or a compromise that might be a not so positive consequence, performance evaluation or a letter of direction. You have to have a way to respond when people aren't meeting those expectations. And you could have just two quotes in there, and I've heard these so many times from other leaders, is what you, what gets done, what gets measured gets done. And you pass what you value, pass it in measure. So that is that goal and measurement that I'm thinking of, value, and monitor the progress over time, and that's where accountability comes from. And then the last thing that they talk about is empowerment, and I had never really thought about it this way when I was reading this chapter, it made a lot of sense. Um, and was relating it back to when I was a principal, how I felt empowered to lead my school, to create this professional learning that they needed, to provide the support that they needed, and it, it energized me, it made me feel really proud of our work, and it just was one of those things, I hadn't thought of it as empowerment, when I was in the role of the principal. Um, and I was thinking how my supervisor helped me feel empowered, she just asked a lot of questions. Uh, but it's the control of your own work, with your control of your own destiny helps you, and is that empowerment? You've got to have standards and you've got to have accountability, and they have to work together. So what I thought we could do, um, kind of looking back at this, um, form here, is talk about what are the standards the board wants to hold and believe that the school system is accountable for? So what is our standard? What are the things that we want to, what are the examples, what are the things we want to achieve? And then how do we want to hold people accountable for meeting those standards? And that's where I thought this was a really nice grab, because I was thinking, what do you talk, you know, how do you can talk about holding people accountable? Lots of some options from zero accountability on the bottom to really career impacting accountability at the top. Um, and then the last thing is empowerment, what level of control do you want to give to your staff? I thought we could just take a little time and discuss kind of some initial thoughts that the board may have. I think it's, I think, you know, we're states, you know, even our charter, we have to teach the state. That is one that I think we have to hold our staff to, um, that we need to, that we're teaching standards and that our students are matched.
I was looking at some of the samples that they have, um, page 114.
Oh, yeah.
And so I was, you know, ethical standards. Does clarification? Talking about.
It can be all the stakeholders, so if we, like, it's kind of like things about communication, teachers are responsible for communication, parents. Um, principals are responsible for communicating what happens at their school to the parent and community. That's another layer of communication responsibility, so it would be, what, what are our expectations for each staff member group for their communication?
Just following the graduation with the student team.
Yep, I think, because to me, that's the, that's the standard of teaching and assessing the state standard. We've measured that through our assessment.
I like what he talks, uh, talked about here about us defining what meaning promotion, grade, grade promotion. At what grade are we going to dig into where, uh, where a child is truly promoted, eight, nine, three, five?
I think one for this, not just high expectations, which is how I'm. Also, what we'll do, take the bullets and start building the goals. Then, so in the final, if there's other areas that I think that are on the topic. So if we think about accountability, um, or empowerment, it's up to the real man of the board here. So how, what level of accountability? Are this the board doing, maybe when we think about all levels? For me, I think, as I was looking at it, I think, you know, as a school system or as a school, you would hope that your peers would be supporting you, you would think. We're collaborating between each other, it, as we've been it together to do well, not, I'm going to do well, I'm not going to care how you do, but we are together focused on supporting students. Um, and this is from Brisbane, so it's not as, you know, tightly aligned to what you would want to see in that education system, where we're really all focused on being good, supporting students and as colleagues between each other.
I wouldn't say, uh, peer pressure, there's a lot of, a lot of peer pressure can drive, cultural pressure can drive a lot of success.
Yeah.
So, um, I think it's about what the standard is. I think we have to like, kind of. That's where I think maybe I might have switched this around. Who controls each individual standard, might control, she's ultimately accountable. So some of these things might. How they drive. Something like, you know, a safety metrics, I think.
And they're meant to kind of go back to what's not, not like a chart. A lot of the teachers are experts, they know their content, but at some points, you know, they're teaching, they're testing their students, whether they're getting the results that we want or not. Then that comes up to the principal, they see the results at their school level, that comes up to them at the district level. And, you know, we've got a superintendent, all superintendents that are ultimately accountable for the achievement in the student in the district. That it's got to scale down and kind of waterfall down, um, so it has to be some, kind of, what do we do when we are getting the results that we want academically?
Okay, I guess I'm just trying to, based on how we consider. So that's thinking, I turned it about the different folks that we would hold accountable. But, you know, I think that, say, you know. Right, but I think they are also responsible for cultural pressure, in terms of the culture of the school. Like, how do, how do we do that if they're mostly pulling zones? I think, let's say, is that principal would be on to zones four through ten, or?
I guess more in general, uh, when we are, what is the board's comfort level regarding some of the employment level of holding that person accountable for meeting or not meeting the standards? And I agree, it's kind of different, if someone violates the code of ethic, that's a very clear, like, loving nine, ten, right?
Right.
So I think there is variation. I, where I'm trying to get to is, there is a fear that, as we look at implementing standards, assessing standards, looking at growth over time, there's a fear that if the results aren't achieved, that will be, you know, either put on a professional learning plan or disciplined in a certain way, or maybe, you know, told, hey, you've got three weeks to get, or a year of data achievement that we're going to pursue it of, or we're going to have to, you know, X, Y or Z in a disciplinary way. So I guess what my question is, where is the board's comfort level with? What level of confidence is the board comfortable with when it comes to what's in the areas?
I think that's also my response. I think, um, I think with student achievement, we want to pick out the things that work well and bring them and find the things. I think I can say, I think with that particular thing, the goal is to keep improving, it's helping teachers and staff be on the line, if they have a tool in the classroom. Or if they're performing a class, they can't come back and ask for help or, you know, or redirect. I feel like if you go too far up that scale, then that's what's happening for that. So I think, I would say that's kind of more. But too far down, and it won't be.
But I'm not comfortable with the more or less conversation. There was a financial effect, where, you know, if everybody in the building has set enough on, you know.
Yeah, paper, like paper performance are getting a day because you didn't, you know, you're working as well as the classroom next door. I mean, I'm, you know, definitely, I'm not a supporter of paper performance at all.
It's like leading one of the sessions five and six for me, right? I would expect principals to praise, critique, teachers, I would expect the administrators to praise and critique. Bad-driven, so they have performance goals that are higher or lower, or like seven, five ways that they can get better. Someone's performance goals. Someone's performance goals increases in their fire. That's a mean that they're. Or, but they should be praised for it. It should be part of the culture of great work. We really only had a ten, over one person. Superintendent really only has nine or ten, or about four or five people. I would be gassed if you walked into, and helped treat fire, that one of the teachers, they weren't doing a particular curriculum. So yes, it absolutely is completely. To me, it's just having systems in place to praise.
I just, I wanna off away with the fear that because we started looking into that one, as we started setting the goal, there is a fear that, oh my gosh, I don't do acquire these, I'll get let go. And I just wanna make sure that every, all the staff here will be communicating how this rolls out. I just wanted to talk about being cautious at the last work session, accountability isn't really on each job. The accountability did is supporting you, praising you, and then offering you life and coaching instead of critique when there's barriers.
Goals, let them know. And everyone's in the classroom, because they want to teach children. And the only way to know what you've done at the end of a semester is, was it cool? Did I do my job?
More we kind of talked about those. As we're talking now.
I'd do like seven. You know, because it, if you use the black and white of what the expectations are. You know, so. All about the praise and critique, but, you know, I, I like to have some of them walk away, but I felt kind of need to, need to focus harder on this, this, and this. So not, you know, there's no confusion about.
And I hope our students do right at performance goal. So that's part of what they could admit, evaluation, they're collecting data on it, did they meet that goal or not? And it's not that it's going to impact their pay, or impact their ability to stay employed, but it is like an end of the year, like, oh my gosh, did I accomplish my goal? Yes or no? You did, great, what are you doing that we can use in other classrooms? And if you didn't, where can we get support so that you can do better next year?
The teachers have, they do have answers.
Okay, good, glad we're in alignment there. So let's talk about empowerment. What, where is this level of control? I don't have a nice little ladder for this one. But as you think about where teachers have flexibility, where principals have flexibility in leading a building, are there certain things that the board is like, we're holding you accountable for teaching, like say the state standards, we're measuring that through the state assessment? You don't have flexibility to teach other topics until you've demonstrated that your students have mastered what we've expected you to teach.
I mean, I, I like that, I think that there's a floor. And the floor is state standards, and the floor is equitable outcomes, we're responding appropriately to it. Renovation rate, et cetera. That, that we're measuring, obviously. And then beyond that, sure, how you do that, we give a great deal of flexibility to performance. And I think it's great, I think it's some of the best classrooms in the world, or motivated by teachers who wanna go beyond. And I think it's the district's job to say, that's fine, but just get there.
And that goes back to, to also the cultural pressure portion of praising publicly what the teachers perhaps, you know. Some teachers, you know, the grade teachers are not super creative, but if they heard about or saw what other teachers were doing, they absolutely adopted it. And so if we're praising them publicly, that they get amongst each other, it's a word, you know, what did you do for that number, friendly attire, whatever. So they were doing that more, that also encouraged. Uh, I think it, we're starting there, and we can go from there. Cause I think one of the other areas of flexibility is, you know, if you look at our schools and what they offer, so if one school is, and then, are we okay with that empowerment at various schools? So Talia implemented a STEM program, we didn't do that yet at the, um, alley, you know, kind of went out on their own and built their houses. We used in that way to build a school morale, we, we, you know, I empowered Billy, I said, yeah, let's try it, let's see how it works. Instead of saying, hey, no, I'm holding you to this standard, you don't have that credibility, you don't have that control over how we're in. Following the strategic plan. How they necessarily. So I would, I would ask, wanna tell them, like, this is for, for chief. Your executive team to be, to upset, off, after their role, on their meeting. I think it's more about how you get the job done than what you're doing in your job. You have to teach the standards, but how you decide to teach the standards is what looks best for you as a teacher, with your students that you're teaching. It's gonna be different with every group.
I think that, that's one criticism that parents have, that schools, books, and deals. As students particularly, or even if they have a kid that went to Westchester and then went to Faye, or if he got Faye and Talia, that everything looks and feels a little different. Or the lunch policy is different at Faye and Talia. It was a great example that they have a SIM program at Talia, and it's not at Faye. Or on leave of time is different at Faye and Talia. And some of that is on us to explain the rationale. But to answer this question directly, I think we have to put in place that some of the baseline, non-negotiables or safety policy, communication policies, so those also look a little bit, I think, that parents. So some basic communication standards. And then the basic state standards, and then the requirement that kids should be similarly promoted with the same sort of basic requirement, especially moving ahead. And then realizing that it may be kind of hand, handed to them based on a teacher's creative license. You know, this isn't a factory, so teachers, all their people, and they got. Into classrooms, they get playgrounds, they're gonna be. But it's the same thing, just cooked a little differently, but we have to make sure that parents understand that. These are the standards that every teacher is going to. Classes, it's things, but I, I think that parents often feel like, you know, because the policy looks different at Westchester, it's something with, you know, the policy's different in some of the high schools. The dress policy is different here, and then.
Sorry, I'm, I'm just thinking about, like, principal's conversation about, say, the cap, would never be approached. They might get, my middle school is very different experience, like. Principal, school is, they're not, you know, they're worried about policies, or, you know, this program at school, but not by a kid's school. And so it's kind of the disadvantage of having a small school system, because you feel, you hear, and feel, and live what your neighbor is getting every day. And there's a sense of jealousy in keeping up with. Thing built into it, but then as a principal, I would not wanna go somewhere where I was not allowed to experiment and grow. I just remember Dr. Thomas, the summer when he has a little pocket, walking back to Kansas, it's the only place that really helped me actually be the principal. I would never want a sense of empowerment to, that way, from teachers and staff, even if it does mean that people at Westchester are angry, that people at Oakhurst have a slightly different policy for X, Y, and Z. I don't disagree, there are certain things that absolutely need to be standardized, doesn't even wanna do it in a way that allows that genuine. Yeah, maybe I'll, maybe I can just show it so that it's not exciting.
Like the conversations that I have with principals, you know, I want you to lead for what is gonna work with your building.
Right.
And it was really kind of proposed during the standoff, and how we always like, hey, so talking about it, talking about what is gonna happen in the building. I went, no, go for it. Maybe when another school sees upgraded, so I wonder too. About hiding things instead of all for nothing. Um, so, and we, let's look at the actual theory of action that I drafted, and I put copies on that sheet as well. And I tried to draft what I felt from our last conversation, it's been a reflection, and I'm, and I'll put it up here as well. Um, and I, I thought I was capturing what I've kind of learned from the board on what you want to create or to become, with the goals, or how do you wanna get there? And that's what really drove where I was thinking on this, I reviewed this with the executive cabinet as well, to get some of their insight coming on it. Um, so we may not finish this draft tonight. We may come back with another draft after you've given some input. Uh, but we wanna, wanna really start thinking about solidifying this theory of action in the next month or so, so that we can use it to be the driving force behind these reform policies, but I think we are ready to start writing. Um, so, I'm curious on your feedback and input, and any edits that you feel need to be made. I think the one thing that's missing from here, I'll just be plain, I wasn't sure how to word it yet, is the accountability. So it's very much kind of outlining our standards of high expectations, um, what we will provide our staff, what we want them to achieve with equitable outcomes and that, and excellence. And then also, uh, what we wanna become is a, that school system that is inclusive and doesn't reinforce or increase marginalization of any group. So I was trying to build all that into this theory of action, but I didn't put accountability, I wasn't, I didn't really know yet where the board was gonna land on that. But now I do have a better idea of that, so I think I've got some ideas for that, but we'll come back and add that to here. It could take that, the mission and vision, and then is how we will work to make the act, those vision and mission reality. So it's almost like your formula for how, what we expect, what we wanna see happen, and what are the conditions in which you think that will be able to achieve, will be able to achieve those outcomes?
This is my first time with the whole theory of action.
Oh. So, um, it was developed, uh, two, two and a half years ago. I didn't put it in this one, I shared, it was the people document I shared. Um, so in, we had started working on a district improvement plan back in 2019. I presented to the board, um, an option, they gave me some feedback, I brought back, um, at the next work session, it equals another version. And then we took that and started creating school improvement plans and a district improvement plan. That, then coded it, kind of screeched the brakes on everything, retooled, and then it was. Lily, Christie, Mary, and I presented to the board, um, a presentation about, okay, we better re-focus on our strategic plan, what we want to accomplish at the district. So we presented that to the board, and that launched a very, our kind of the district improvement plan we're using now. Um, and in that, I created a coherent framework, and I just drafted a very general theory of action that we've had kind of in place. Not really anything, we hold people to a review level, it was just a very basic tool to say, hey, we believe everyone can be highly effective. They're given the support that they need, and will achieve equitable outcomes. Is there anything missing from that? I was deliberate about using each student, cause I'm very, when you say all students, I think that, that creates this idea of it's an average, we're looking at averages. But when I say each student, that's very deliberate of Carmen will achieve, Tasha will achieve, Jamie will achieve, James will achieve.
So that's what I might add, equitable. Cause that's already a long sentence.
Where would you pick up? I've been thinking about adding, under the, for the standard, the bullet three is, we could add for accountability piece in there. And our staff are provided all these things, but then include recognition and coaching. As the accountability piece, or that work somewhat into that for what the performance goals. So like the staff will be provided support, and they're set up to effectively teach, and that's measured by their performance goals, your coaching. Yeah. Was it a bachelor's? Okay. Will be given? Presented? Yeah, I understand. Provided, provided, okay. This is the instructional guide, so. So, the last thing that I've provided is, so now that we kind of have this idea tentative, you know, first rough draft, now we gotta connect the theory of action policy. And aligning policy theories deliberately, very thoughtfully, so that we as a board, or who as a board, should fulfill this school system that we want to become. And I think, um, I provide, I pulled some policies that I found from other districts, that I can speak to some of those policies that this board may be interested in examining, that are currently ones that we don't really have anything about, and are not meaningful. Uh, so a lot came from Portland Public Schools, they've got some really productive policies. Some come from, that are public schools. I was pulling to work from Pittsburgh Public Schools, lots of PT, I didn't get to those, but, um, there was, as Carmen was talking about, um, promotion criteria, what we want to see students achieve, grade to grade. That's one that actually is very, not very defined in what district, they really hold tight at their graduation requirement, more so than how students progress grade to grade. So this promotion criteria, I think it is like, okay, if you're gonna graduate from second grade to third grade, what do you need to achieve before you, right? To move up to that next threshold? Uh, so that might be something that we will get. Um, but I think two that I thought would be really important to look at first, um, this one from the anti-racist and anti-oppression learning community. I thought that one is one that would really speak to what we believe in under school system. is one that would really speak to what we believe in under the school system. And then also, it ties really closely in with the racial equity one from Portland Public Schools. There's a, there's lots in here, and we'll take a lot of time, a lot of time to draft. One of the ones that I know our teachers would like is for the board to come up with some policies. And I put the one in here for APS, is they were teaching controversial issues. And AP, uh, Portland had a similar one as well, which was academic freedom. But I think if we could choose two to start drafting, that that would be a good to, for us to start as a board. And then what I would do is work with whatever team is responsible for this area, start drafting the documents for the board to review.
So in terms of the controversial issue, did we just, did we devise the, um, less concept?
Yes, because it clarifies when some of them make a complaint, we've got a process to go through, but it provides the teachers with the support of knowing that they follow these rules and kind of take this off our, to our. I wonder maybe if you wanted to do one that was just a general equity. We don't, no, we don't, no, but we can, like, this is one of the options, APS also has a potential to be called. So I knew we could have one if we want to, because we haven't accepted.
Are these definitions here that are in the anti-racist policy here, which exactly what a body is, and then what. That defined in our code of conduct, because this, this could be, it's a separate policy, or it could be a global issue.
Yeah, we don't have this. Some of it is, so H C to do, have to find, I don't know that we have single repeat to find in there or a bias in it. And then we do have H C to find in that.
Because the thing, I, I mean, I think this is, I mean, this is important, but I think. This is probably like.
Yeah, then we don't have a, we have what our equity department and all the Latin, it's free, there's nothing you can do. The old hall manual tells you to develop an ethical management. And like, you know, the same statements that everyone can discriminate against, somebody's category, have roots, but nothing that's specific to the. We will start with the, uh, first official issue in the general equity policy. And then what we'll do is kind of keep identifying the next couple we're working on, and we just go through that. I have anything else for the work of the board tonight?